Just waiting for seven thirty, which is the legal start time.
Yeah.
Vote to come out of close, please. So moved second, Mrs. Charico and Mrs. Brooks. Please rise with the flag twice.
And what we do is to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. Hope you enjoyed your summer. We're off into another school year. And with that, we're going to move into public discussion. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Rockaway Township Public Schools. The board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operation of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. May I have a motion, please, to open to the public?
So moved second.
Mrs. Shields and Mrs. Brooks. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the board?
Um, sure. Um, I'm Nick Waller. She sent me down full path. Um, and I have a five-year-old who's going to kindergarten. I just want to commend to you all who went to kindergarten orientation yesterday. She walked in saying that she was a little bit nervous and a little bit excited. And she ran out saying that she was very excited for kindergarten. So I just want to commend the staff there so much. It was just a wonderful day. I really felt like she's going to be in good hands. I'm very excited. I just wanted to shout out.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And we wish her the best year possible. Anyone else? With that, may I have a motion, please, to close to the public?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks, second. And Mrs. Charico. Moving on now to communications.
Have there been any additional communications?
No, there has been none. Thank you very much. Moving on then to approve the minutes of August fourteenth. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Shields? For discussion? If not, roll call, please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Charico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souny?
Yes.
Motion passes. Superintendent's report, Dr. Trenneman.
Thank you. Good evening, Rockaway Township. I'm pleased to report that we are ready for a very exciting 2019-2020 school year. For starters, we welcomed twenty-six new teachers to our district during our two-day new teacher orientation this week. And today, we kicked off the school year with a welcome-back convocation for our entire staff. Our convocation kicked off with a presentation focused on the theme, "We Are Better Together." As I shared with our entire staff this morning, collaboration and communication will be essential to ensure we are creating supportive and nurturing environments for our students and staff. I would like to thank our administrative team for their full participation in our leadership retreat last week. Over the course of the week, they modeled how we truly are better together. From data analysis to idea sharing, the team worked diligently as they gauge and norming sessions about our teacher supervision systems. Another area where we focused our attention included the development of strategies for how our school leaders will begin to reorganize traditional faculty meeting time, of which we have twenty-six hours worth during the school year, to authentic community learning time, where this time is used to support our teachers' growth and collaboration. In my back-to-school letter this week, I advertised the following dates for community forums, where I will engage our community about a strategic planning process. October third, October twenty-eighth, and December third. The forums will begin promptly at seven PM and include by eight-thirty PM. These events will take place in the Copland Cafe, and I will share more details about each event in the coming weeks. The police chief and principal governor and I will be interviewing a new candidate tomorrow for one of our Class Three officer vacancies. We have two candidates in the pipeline for a potential October start date. While we continue the recruitment and hiring process for the Class Three officers, Rockaway Township Police Department will conduct daily physical checks of our five elementary schools and one daily physical check of Copland. This will ensure all officers in town stay familiarized with the layout of every school building and our staff. If you haven't yet, please take a moment to review our district's homepage to find information about each school's back-to-school night activities. These events will provide families with detailed information about our new curricular programs and ways they can support this work in the home. In closing, I'd like to send out a sincere heartfelt message of gratitude and appreciation to our buildings and grounds and IT departments. Over the last several weeks, these two departments have been hard at work to ensure our students, staff, and families return to school environments exemplifying the high standards of care with access to top-notch technology resources on the very first day of school. I have witnessed their efforts firsthand and very much appreciate all they have done to ensure our infrastructure is prepared to receive our community on September third. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Trenneman?
I do. Since the open, since the open house back-to-school night, you have a captive audience, that's the largest turnout you'll ever get at a meeting at a school. Will the strategic planning dates be broadcasted at that time?
They will, yes.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Moving on then, Mrs. DeCarlo, VA's report.
Good evening. I had the pleasure of attending convocation this morning and was very surprised at the upbeat mood in the home. It was reminiscent of the pep rally days of my high school years. Our maintenance and facilities group is in the final stages of preparation for Tuesday. I always love walking through the buildings and seeing everything in good order for the first day of school. The transportation department has their fleet ready along with the IT department. Along with the IT department, has made bus pass assignment part of the Genesis parent portal, doing away with the mail-in and bus passes. Please do not hesitate to reach out to the transportation department if you have any questions about this new procedure. The business office is preparing for our yearly audit, which will begin on September fifth. Please enjoy the last few days of summer and a long holiday weekend. Thank you.
Questions for Mrs. DeCarlo?
The bus pass edition, personally, at least in my household, is stellar because I never remember what I do with that sleeping fever. And I can never remember, are we, is the bus coming at eight sixteen, eight twenty-six? So I appreciate it like that. And I like that everything was right there in the starting range for all three kids.
Thank you.
Apples to our IT department as well for making that all happen.
So with that then, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you, Higgins, for this opportunity to share what the district is doing in the areas of curriculum and instruction. Uh, it continues to be a busy summer, and we are very excited about the upcoming school year. Uh, to continue on some of Dr. Trenneman's points, during the week of August nineteenth, the admin team here in the district met for our annual retreat and began to craft our vision for the year in accordance with the district's goals and mission and vision. Uh, during the week, we learned from experts, from one another, and from the data we observed. Barry Erligson, formerly the Assistant Commissioner of Education for the state of New Jersey, worked with us on Tuesday to help us understand the trends in our NJSLA and HARP data over the last few years and began to show us how we might have those conversations with teachers and parents. During Thursday's session, we met with Dr. Tracy Severance, the former Chief Academic Officer for the state of New Jersey. Uh, and she shared her vision for how we can transform our meeting time with teachers from one of compliance to one of shared learning, which better fits our vision of a learning organization and culture here at Rockaway. We left the big recharge and ready to tackle the new school year head-on. Today also marked the beginning of convocation, our annual gathering to open the school year for faculty and staff. Among the many scheduled events are training and many of the new initiatives that we have in the district. Chiefly, there are sessions on the following. Foundations, which is our K two word study program. Ready Math, uh, one of the pilot programs here at, uh, three of our elementary schools, and fifth grade math. Words Their Way, which is our three through five, uh, grades three through five word study program. Genesis Evaluation Training for Certified Staff. Safe Schools Training, and Staff Assistant Training, uh, which will feature works with our behaviorists and, uh, many others as well. Additionally, we rolled out our data dashboards today at the convocation. Uh, you may recall in previous updates, we've spoken about this project. Through a combined effort between each of the schools, the IT department, and my office, we've been able to find, organize, and visually represent historical student data in grades four through eight. This enables us to see a bigger picture of student achievement over time and going forward will provide us insight into the appropriate interventions for students. The district has collected student data for several years, and with these dashboards, administrators, teachers, interventionists, and parents can now utilize that data to make quicker decisions.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Higgins?
I just have one. Um, regarding the, the data dashboards, once the, the child is in eighth grade, can that be uploaded somehow to the high school so that they have that?
Yeah, it could be, yes, it can be downloaded and, or forwarded on PDF format. It's a good idea.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, committee reports.
Mrs. Brooks, we just have this regular meeting. So I know Mrs. DeCarly went and put out some dates to me, but we wanted to see if Mrs. Charico and Mrs. Shields are available. We're looking at whether it's at the third week in September. It was Thursday the nineteenth, but that's the other. So what's your date? So do you want to do the nineteenth at four?
What were the other dates?
Uh, well, we would go into the next week. That was just the first available date. Thursdays are fifth. Great, only will be an hour?
Yes.
So what date we're going to do, um, the nineteenth, September nineteenth, and we'll start about four o'clock start time?
Any other committee reports?
Just a reminder that we have, uh, the curriculum meeting set for the sixteenth. And, uh, in that meeting, um, we're, we're going to be looking at, um, planning our meetings throughout the year. We had a regular meeting date before, so we'll discuss that.
Great, that's at six o'clock, I, I do think so.
But now that we've moved into Mondays, I'm with my schedule so we can start earlier if everyone else wants to.
I'm getting through that.
I can do it there also. Do you want to do that out? As long as it's answered before I can do it.
I just want to check my schedule.
Uh, what's, whatever you want to do, I can do.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, Mrs. Mezick.
As far as policy meeting, uh, we have our next policy meeting, uh, tomorrow. Um, and one thing that we will be doing as well is coming up with an agenda based on what policies we'll be working on for the rest of the year.
How can you set an agenda for the policies when you get updates quarterly from Strauss Esme?
These are not the ones for the updates. Um, just to recap what we had discussed, um, at the last board meeting. One of the things that we are doing as the policy committee, I'm actually cross-referencing, um, you know, printed out, um, our table of contents, rewrite one. So we are going through and any, um, any policy that we have that references another policy, we're making sure that those policies do exist. Um, as I had mentioned before, we found some anomalies. So that's what we are setting for our agenda. Obviously, we'll supersede that as any updates that come from Strauss Esme.
But I thought that you had recommended school boards to do an audit for us to do with that. So now you're not recommend, so I know Strauss Esme, Dr. Trenneman told us, is doing it for us. So then why are you doing it if they're doing it?
Um, to be quite honest, I'm not sure. So since we haven't had that come out yet, um, I'm not sure what will be covered with that. I'm not sure if they're just looking at policies as listed and whether or not they're, you know, the last time they were updated. For example, um, as I had mentioned, one policy in particular, we found that two policies that are listed within the body of policy are not listed in our table of contents, and they are not on the website. So those are the things. I'm not sure if they're going to be reading through every single policy, and that's why we just want to get it handled.
A lot of things that before either you or they do the work, and double, do double work, that maybe a conversation should be had to find out exactly what they will be doing so you don't have to do what they're going to be doing for us. Because that would be a waste of your time. So I don't know who should do that, but you go, Dr. Trenneman, I guess it would be you.
I could, I had to face the goal with them this morning.
Okay, that would be great. And let us know. Um, you know, as a follow-up to the meeting of last, uh, two weeks ago, um, the suggestion was made to have an audit of our policies by New Jersey School Boards that does offer that service. It's been paid dues to New Jersey School Boards organization. Um, some of us on the board said, "Not so fast. Uh, we all, we already hired Strauss Esme. They're our vendor, and they should be doing it." And it turns out they will be doing it, so we'd like to keep it in the same house. It makes a lot more sense in terms of consistency. So I just don't want people doing double work. It's not fair to you. You know, it's a lot, policy's a lot of work, so.
And just a reminder, I'd like to ask if they can index.
Yeah.
As we were going, as we were going through them, we were trying to keep track of where, it becomes very simple. Like, you can start to look at one and then you go to others. We're trying to milk that. And that's why we're, it's referenced, we want to make sure it's updated. And we've already kind of started that process. I don't think we're going to be too hard to believe of it. I just kind of have a plan. We're all updated on the, on the, uh,
Yeah, we're, we're.
mandated pieces are updated, um, the update from, um, Strauss Esme. That's all.
Maybe also another thing to talk about is, there's different terminology used in different parts of different policies. Sometimes you have created, and then you have edited. And then you'll have policies that they show on the bottom, adopted, and then revised, revised. And then there's some that don't show, like, show your vision on the top, but then don't carry it down. And that was just the current one that we have just done. Um, so there's some space in inconsistencies. And also, um, created and edited seem like two, two different things. Um, so the policy was first on, and a lot of them were in the January two thousand thirteen.
Right.
Um, that was when it was created. Um, and they're not all showing that. Sometimes it's then changing over, and you create it and edit it, or showing it at the same date. So maybe if you're going forward and trying to make the consistency, something.
You were referring to the end pieces.
End and the top.
Yeah.
Both, both pieces.
Just like.
Yeah, that's one of the things I'm, I'm keeping track of on this, is, you know, when was the first day? How many days it's been revised, um, if there are inconsistencies as far as not having updates. So some of the other things that we'll be addressing within that agenda, um, hopefully, as we said, uh, we don't have to do double work, because we are seeing a lot, um, of things with formatting issues. I'm not sure if that is something that's come specifically from Strauss Esme, or is that our own system that is somehow skewed, because you must remember you tell, but all the yellow ones are the ones I've had notes on, and most of them are formatted and spacing. So maybe if we're just looking at a policy, fixing those little, you know, tweaking those, and then that might be what we need to do. Like, an example is, um, though we have a second read on was the eligibility of resident, non-resident, pupils. Last meeting, and I noticed that it showed created November two thousand sixteen, edited in August two thousand nineteen, which makes sense. And then you go down to the bottom of it, there was an adopted January two thousand thirteen. So, and then, so adopted, and then also the two revisions of August and November of two thousand sixteen. But then showing revised, but then it was revised again this recent one that wasn't added to the bottom. And that was the current one that was just gone last time. Yeah, I'm going to address some of that, um, when it comes to the policy section, because there are some things that we noticed, uh, even the ones that are on our first read. There are still some, um, typos on there that.
On our website.
Exactly. There's still some typos. You're like, okay, we're not sure exactly how this is happening. So we might, um, when we get to that point, ask the table some of those, uh, just so we can fix some of those problems before we actually go to first read. But that will, that will be later.
And also some of the language that's in there, I don't know how, um, like, if it's accurate refers to a high school district or high school courses, like, in terms of just, um, those fine differences. Like, I'm not sure if it's connected to the statute, so we want to look into, like, those pieces in our information. And one of the ones that we need to look at for today, for the first read, it talks about, uh, high school courses. But we do have high school courses, and it has to do with standardized systems, so I'm not exactly sure how it applies. And then, once, since we're done with all of the mandates, we have a chance to, like, kind of pause and reflect and actually, like, hearing that piece as opposed to, like, okay, we have to figure out what these new policies are, and work through it. And now we actually have a little bit of breathing room to kind of look at that piece.
So what's the last update that you worked on from Strauss Esme?
Uh, we finished that one. That was when Dr. DeCarlo.
So that was, like, the spring? So there's probably another one coming very soon.
Right.
And so with that, as I requested, the last meeting of the board could get a copy of the cover pages that explain the rationale. Give a help in the discussions. It takes a lot of pressure on you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In terms of committee reports, the Rockaway Township Education Association, I'm sorry, the Rockaway Township, um, Bus Drivers Association is meeting with the board negotiations team on September third to continue our negotiations. And, uh, we look forward to resolving as much as we can and getting a contract, um, done. So we will give you an update, what we can do at the next meeting. But as of now, so Mrs. Shields, Mrs. Charico, myself, with Mr. DeCarlo, will be at, meeting with the RT, um, with the Rockaway Township Bus Drivers Association. With that, we move then to recommend different board action. Section A is personnel. It begins on page four. It goes through page eight. I'd like to make a motion that we vote on items number two through thirty and withdraw number one. Let me preface this by saying that this is personnel-related. There can be no public discussion. All items have been discussed in executive session under this section. So may I please have a motion then to vote on items two through thirty for personnel?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Shields? Uh, Mrs. Smith, thank you. Roll call, please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Charico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souny?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to HIV determination, there are no current investigations and no prior ones that need to be voted upon. We will therefore move to section C, education. May I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Mrs. Brooks, Mrs. Hellbord, for discussion. I would ask, uh, the Dr. Trenneman or Mr. Higgins, the agreement with the Rutgers Institute for Improving Student Achievement, can you give a little explanation to the public as to what that will entail for thirty thousand dollars?
Yes, uh, it's an agreement that lasts over a three-year commitment, where we're going to be bringing in, uh, professional development, uh, staff to work with a group of teachers initially, and our school counselors, on introducing restorative practices that align with our new code of discipline, um, around, or that is aligned with our core values of HARP. And so, over the next three years, we'll be training more and more of our staff around, uh, what it means to embrace a restorative approach when building relationships and healthy relationships with our students. Um, and much of this work is building that capacity over a three-year period.
So the thirty thousand dollars is for a three-year con, three-year contract?
Yes.
Is there a way to put that into the motion that is for a three-year contract? Because as it reads now, it reads as, to me, I looked at it for one year.
Okay, I may be.
Based on the contract itself, thirty thousand?
It's the first year. Okay, so I misspoke. It's, the intention is for this to be a three-year engagement, but I can say that the number goes down over the next two years.
So can you share with me how many hours they're going to be in our district for thirty thousand dollars?
I, that would be in the contract, so we can certainly get that.
Yeah, they do have it spelled out in the contract. Uh, it's broken down by day, each time they're in the district. So it raises a single dollar charge for each time they do come to the district.
When is this starting? Do you know when the first day is?
We, they've been in already, I know.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, one question, I guess, with that. Do we have any idea how much it will be for the second and third year?
We do have projected costs, yes. I, I don't have that in front of me. I do have that in my department.
If there are any questions for the public, I can open to the public for the education section. If not, may I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Charico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souny?
Yes.
Moving on to special education on page nine. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Shields?
Second.
Mrs. Charico. For discussion, special education. If not, I can open to the public after special education. Roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Charico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Souny? Yes, motion passes. Moving on to administration, beginning on page nine, ending, I believe, on page eleven. Yes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Charico?
Second.
Mrs. Shields? For discussion.
Are the toilet wipers, are these for kindergarten classrooms?
Yes, they are. Any other questions?
I do. With the Standing of Promise on page ten, the paragraph that talks about, um, starting polo, and I know that for a member of you who's seeking to mend where it's gone, starting down the elementary school level, that the, introducing that, it says grades two to twelve. We are only doing this at the middle school.
That's correct.
And is there any plan on the start for program being implemented in the elementary schools?
Not at this time. I think we want to look at the implementation here at the middle school first.
Okay, at the last board meeting, um, I raised a question, um, and the administration, um, did in fact respond to me. While I agree with the Standing of Promise in concept, I do feel the parents have a right to say no and to opt out of this program. And so, uh, thank you, Dr. Trenneman, for making, for making it happen. I asked that there be a letter drafted, and then the board get to see the letter that's going out with, which will detail if your child, if you do not have your child involved in this program, what will that child, what will your child be doing? So I wanted both questions answered. Can you opt out? Yes. And there is a plan if the children are not going to be involved in the program. So thank you very much, and the letter was well done. And, um, now I can support. May I have a motion?
Thank you.
I can open to the public if anybody wishes to raise a question or address the board. Not? May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salm?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to finance, beginning on page 12, ending on page 12. May I have a motion, please?
No move.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Shields? Board discussion.
I was at the board office yesterday signing off with the board on the purchase orders. And start of school, there was quite a bulk basket. One of the items that was in there was the classroom libraries paying for all those. So it's nice to see that that is done and I would love to see maybe some pictures of what these look like in some classrooms in the future or something. I mean, we did put a lot of money into that.
We did. And I want to again thank the board for their investment in those classroom libraries. The teachers have been extremely excited coming back and seeing them. We initially tweeted out the libraries and their packages. Once we get them on those shelves, we'll tweet out more pictures. And we do have thoughts about engaging the community with some targeted donations to continue to build on those libraries going forward. So more information to come on that.
Anyone else? If not, I can open to the public under finance. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salm?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to policy, beginning on page 13, ending on page 13. Motion, please?
No move.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Cherico. Mazzick, it's all yours.
Okay, on the agenda for a motion to approve the following policies for our first read. Policy 2417, people intervention and referral services. Policy 2460, special education. Policy 5519, dating violence at school. Policy 5530, substance abuse. Policy 5610, suspension. Policy 5620, expulsion. Policy 8330, student records. So we'll just stop there for a moment. As I mentioned, as policy committee reviewed the things that were sent out, we did see typos on policy 2417. Another typo on 2460, special education. We had a, so we think we need to have another conversation about policy 5519, dating violence at school. So we would like to table that one to make sure that it does, it is reflected in our handbook. Policy 5610, we did notice some typos on there as well, specifically whether or not we should be splitting the first paragraph into two, so it's more of a formatting issue. And again, on page two, paragraph five, whether or not we should be including the adult students or should we remove that? Obviously this came down from Strauss Esme. But that is another thing that I'm not really sure that it's ready to pass for first read. So we continue on with policy 5620, expulsion, and policy 8330, student records. We continue on the first read with no changes.
Can you just repeat which ones you're table?
I'm going to ask for, I believe I'd make a motion to table those.
Yes.
So you're making a motion to table which I.
Oh, I was just going to leave it on, like if anyone had any questions for that before I read that question.
Any recommendations or something you still have to make?
Okay, but if you're tabling it, we're not discussing it.
Correct. So I would like to make a motion to table policy 5519, dating violence at school, and policy 5530, substance abuse.
Can I have a question? When we bring it back, will you pull back exactly where it is now?
Um, we're not sure yet.
Would you want me to do more flexible? Would you want me to rewrite the entire range? Table it in policy format, basically all the same.
So may I have a motion to withdraw? It would be, you learn, you never stop learning. May I have a motion to withdraw policy 5519 and 5530? Mrs. Mazzick, you're making that motion to withdraw?
Correct.
Okay, and then who is seconding?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Discussion then on, discussion on the first reads.
Okay, not those two. Starting at the top, you said the 2417 was just some typos. And then you have some items that are bold on our, so those are changes, correct? Addition to typos. The 2460, special education, once again, you were saying type-only typos. Okay, I should probably just stop you for a second. The things that are bolded, obviously, are those changes. We have noticed additional typos since that went out to board that it didn't, what we discussed in the policy committee was not reflected in the changes that need to happen.
Did I make that part of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so it was actually, okay, so special education, we were just doing typos. It's a suspension that has the. And student records, that was typos or is that just re-adoption? Yeah, that was something that we had found reference in policy 5610. So it's a re-adoption, there's no changes to it.
Any other questions for the first reads? Moving on to the second reads.
Okay, so the second read, policy 5410, permission to retention. Policy 5420, free on people progress. Policy 5500, expectations for people conduct. Policy 5560, disrupt the pupils. Policy 9280, parent conferences. Do we have any questions about those? Okay, so obviously, if this motion goes forward, these will become our new updated policies.
Correct. Any other questions for the policy committee? I can open to the public if anyone would like to make a comment. Easy night for you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salm?
Yes, motion passes. We look forward to those policies coming back.
Yes.
In a different form, correct? Because they're withdrawn.
Yes.
I would like to thank you for putting them.
Put again, PDF. Makes it easier.
We discussed that during the policy, it turned out to be easier.
Well, because the formatting, sometimes I think it can be counterproductive to talk about formatting, but it depends on, you know, you're putting out what? Do you have Word? All that jazz. So PDF makes it a little more, it seems.
Okay, moving on to old business. Any old business for the board?
I do have a question. Actually goes back to policy. From the second read, last time, the eligibility of resident, non-resident pupils was updated on the website. The reg was only, was last updated January 2013. Is that something that this way administration is looking at? And it is a mandated reg. Is it one of the mandated ones that has been more approved or just revised?
I'll need to take a closer look at that, so, and we can add that to our agenda for tomorrow.
So I'll have to, once the policy is, then it's correct. Thank you.
Any other old business? New business?
Mrs. Brooks? So we have been talking about communication and things like that. And I think we've all been in agreeance that things are used and bound better than they've ever been. So I had made an observation a couple of months ago, which I shared with everyone, about our communications via board mail versus other channels with the community. And I was wondering if we can go through and do a little scattergram just to kind of see the progress. Because I think sometimes we do a lot of stuff here and it's not always tangible. There's a lot of things like policy, for example, or withdrawing because there, you know, it's a lot of work. And I think there's big wins sometimes. And I think this communication piece, which is something that we've worked really hard on for the past three years. Ex-president sitting in the seat can attend to that. I think it's become pretty obvious that the community has many, many avenues and ways to see what's happening, learn what's happening, the chain of command. And to me, board mail is one of those pieces of puzzle. Because we used to get many, many board mails about many things that didn't necessarily, you know, really have power from us. And I think we have been, again tonight, there was no communication. And when they have been in the past nine to 12 months, they've been thank yous or invites or things from the staff. So I think it's a tremendous effort and I kind of would like to see it in writing.
I can certainly, since I'm the one that clears board mail, I can certainly, the next meeting, give you a rundown of this current, of last year compared to this year. Or even, I've never erased any. They're all there. I've only erased the junk mail. So I can certainly give you a tally of how many and what month. I can do that at the next meeting. It'll be my pleasure. I can tell you that I check board mail every day and it's lonely out there. We haven't gotten, we haven't gotten anything except from one reporter just wanting to know where the meeting was in months. So that is a good thing. But I will absolutely, you have my commitment to do that. I can do the board mail piece. I will do it.
Thank you, Sue.
Maybe even on Excel, I'll press you.
A Google, you put it in a Google sheet.
Now you're pushing. But yes, I can do that too. I do have a piece of new business. The next board meeting was scheduled for September 4th. That is exactly a week away. And when we took a look at, you know, what would be on the agenda for a week from now with school not even open yet, it didn't make a lot of sense to have that meeting. So we are going to cancel the September 4th meeting. We will have the meeting on September 18th. That is definite. But it didn't make sense to bring people out for maybe a five-minute, even like a workshop kind of thing. So the board made the decision tonight, if that's, that's correct. We're all nodding. So we will then, the next meeting will be September 18th, same time, same place. With that, I can open up to the public for comments or anybody who wishes to address the board on anything? I don't know. Well, okay then. So since there is no one from the public who wishes to address the board, I would like to have a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight. I'm sorry, who said that? Mrs. Smith?
Second.
Mrs. Brooks, at according to that clock, 8:13. Thank you very much. And we look forward to having you come back to another meeting. Enjoy your evening.